Good evening and welcome to the Isleta Independent School District Video Conference, Board of Trustees. We invite you here to share your board during the public comment portion of our meeting.
Good evening and welcome to the Isleta Independent School District.
Sign up your cards, show the rules for Board of Trustees.
Participating at the link provided in the electronic posting notice hour meeting. Your comments will be read out loud. Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into discussion on the issue raised. The Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:02 PM. We have a quorum with Charlie Bustillos, Altero Ramirez, Richard Gare, Mike Rosales, Connie Woodruff, Dr. Lucero, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. First, Dr. Lucero, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence?
Microphone.
Hold on guys, sorry. Can you hear me now? Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Now for a moment of silence for our community, for our state and nation as we face this pandemic together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucero. Okay, now we go on. Do we have any citizens' input?
We do. We have Arlinda Valencia. The topic is "Thank You." The Isleta Teacher Association, YTA, TSTA, NEA, La La Independent School District, Superintendent Dr. De La Torre, and members of the Isleta ISD Board of Trustees for all they have done to make sure that our students, faculty, staff, and community stay safe during this unforeseen crisis. While the Isleta schools remain closed and to the notice, we thank the district for supporting the health of students, faculty, and staff and the community. We thank you for all the actions you have already taken and will continue to take on our employees' behalf. With the Stay-at-Home Work Safe Order placed on El Paso, it is great to know that all the employees of Isleta have security that their jobs are safe. We are thankful, the Isleta ISD, for continuing to pay all employees, classified and certified, for as long as schools remain closed. The fact that employees are being paid without needing to take sick, personal, family, medical leave shows the great commitment to everyone associated with the Isleta district. While other districts are still considering to pay or not to pay their classified employees, YISD District since day one ensured all classified employees that they would be paid. And if required to work during the school closure due to their positions, they would receive paid time and a half. The Isleta ISD employees have been fortunate to be associated with great leadership. Even though we don't know when this will all end, employees can rest assured that they are being taken care of. YISD parents can also be assured that YISD educators are on task with virtual learning. Our educators are excited to get back to communicating with students and parents. The YI District will continue to offer the best quality education for all students and the best working condition for all employees. In saying that, I would like to end with one request. I would like to ask this board to become the first district to extend the Stay-at-Home Work Safe Order until the end of this calendar year. In a school setting, social distancing isn't realistic and is unobtainable. While other businesses may be able to function, education cannot. Keeping children and employees safe at home should be the main priority. I hope you will agree and make this happen. We look forward to returning to normal operating procedures when this crisis ends. But until then, we want to again say thank you to the Superintendent Dr. Xavier De La Torre and YISD Board for making this experience as easy as possible. Thank you, Arlinda Valencia, YTA President.
Thank you, Ms. Matheson. Hey, Dr. De La Torre, do you have any presentations for us this evening?
Yes, President Ochoa, members of the board, colleagues who I know are on the video conference. We have three agenda items tonight. The first is a recommended or proposed 2020-21 budget, operating budget. The second is your monthly meeting with your internal auditor. You've received a report from Ms. Champagne Chi. She will be available to answer any questions you have. And then the final presentation is in preparation for the regular meeting of the school board this Wednesday night as we go through both the consent agenda items and the action items. And staff is prepared to be responsive and answer any questions or consider any concerns that the board or a respective member of the board may have. So with that, what I'd like to do is I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Lindley Leeper, our Chief Financial and Operations Officer. She will take you through a presentation. Now remember, if you have any questions, unmute, raise your hand. Ms. Monica Matheson is going to record the order of trustees wanting to speak to that agenda item. And we will suspend the presentation until all of your questions are answered and then move forward with tonight's workshop agenda. So with that, I leave you in the most capable hands of Mrs. Lindley Leeper.
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board, and Dr. De La Torre. Thank you for the introduction, Dr. De La Torre. Let me share my screen with you and get this started. So... There we go. So as you well know, we've been working for some time now on development of the 2020-2021 fiscal year operating budget. And as you also know, any good budget is underpinned by a strategic plan. And knowing that our vision 2020 was coming to an end in October of 2019, we engaged Dr. Lizzie Asbury to begin working with our stakeholders. Between October and January 2020, she met with the PAC, the SAC, the Central and Operational Employees, as well as the DEIC and several other stakeholder groups to develop and to gain from them what they believed the next five years should look like. That work culminated with a presentation of the proposed scorecard to the board at their board retreat on February 27th. And from that, we took a great deal of invaluable information back to the drawing board and worked together to synthesize the information, still incorporating the elements of HB3 into what we're calling Encore 2025. And so the first goal centers around our future, which is our children and their academic achievement and their college career military readiness as they graduate from high school. And so the development of the budget obviously must have appropriate resources dedicated to Goal One. And I'm pleased to show you on this slide where we are looking at the categories or the functions that TEA requires for us to adopt a budget under. You can see in the first column there that the first five categories are bracketed to show you that these are the allocations that are directly campus-related. And those five categories just from the general fund in the second column under 100 general fund, that's roughly 70% of our annual operating budget is dedicated to instruction to ensure our students master content and that when they graduate, they're college, career, or military-ready. Bless you. As we move to Goal Two and talk about our people, here we're talking not only about our employees, but our larger Isleta ISD family, the parents, the students, and the greater community that supports us. We obviously, for our employees, want to provide a competitive compensation and benefit package. And for our parents and our community, we want to ensure that our employees want to come to work, that it's an enjoyable place to be, but also that our community trusts sending their children to us for school. And so when we talk about people, it's that broader span of interaction with us. And so let's talk a little bit about the compensation and benefit package for employees. We worked at length with Ms. Valencia and YTA. And as you know, the last couple of years, we have recommended to you a balanced budget with a 1.5% increase. And the board has opted every year to ask us to move with a 2%. So we have incorporated the 2% this year and brought you back a balanced budget. That 2% applies to the midpoint for teachers, nurses, and librarians, as well as to all full-time paraprofessionals, ancillary administrative, and professional personnel. We've also still included the one-time lump sum payment of $500 that's usually issued in the paycheck just before the winter break. So this is a table just summarizing the impacts. And you can see that in column one, the 2% increase adds about $6 million to our annual budget. The $500 one-time lump sum is already incorporated in last year's budget, so it's not an addition to this year's budget, but we wanted you to be able to see what that costs. And so generally speaking, this is about $8.9 million that go into the employee compensation package. With regard to the one-time lump sum, we limit this to all full-time personnel employed on a specific date, and that's to comply with federal labor laws. And we've done it every year. So anyone that's employed by the district on a full-time basis on November 11th will be entitled to the $500 one-time lump sum. We make the payments for bi-weekly employees. They would see it in their November 20th check just before the winter break, while all of the monthly employees would see it in their November 30th check. The reason we do this is because the IRS actually says that when you issue a check that is separate from a regular payroll check, it's technically what they classify as a bonus. And they want us to withhold 25%. And so it's better for us to incorporate it in the regular payroll check because otherwise we are supposed to subject it to higher federal withholding. So moving along then, let's talk a little bit about the health insurance package. And I'll be just briefly reviewing what we talked about last month. As you all know, we have not had a change in our benefit package or our benefit program cost since 2014 to the employees. The district has continued to increase its contribution during those years. After starting work about a year ago with a large insurance oversight committee and our consultant Gallagher, we have come up with a new benefit package that was recommended last month and was approved to award to Aetna. And the increase that we're proposing in this budget for employees and for the district is a 3% increase to each. Now, many people have said, "Oh, so you're increasing 6%." And I thought it would be helpful to you to see a table outlining what the contributions would be compared to now and in the future. So you can see on the left side of the column, there are the various plans. That plan structure remains the same. And so if we use Plan One as the example, if you're an employee only and you're in Plan One, right now you pay $211 a month. If you have all your children and your spouse in the plan, then you may pay $1,040 a month for Plan One. With a 3% increase effective January of 2021, the lowest end of that scale would now go from $211 to $217, while those in the most expensive part of it with family and spouse would go from $1,040 to $1,071 a month. And on the last row, you can see that the district currently contributes about $3 million, $2,954,000 a month. We would be going up also 3%, and that means each month the district will contribute $3,42,000 to the employee or to the insurance fund. And so continuing then, you can see that our investment, or Goal Three, talks about not only protecting the district's asset and the taxpayers' investment in the district, but also ensuring fidelity in the implementation of both the 2015 bond program and now the 2019 bond program. So when we talk about protecting the district's assets, obviously, we're talking about long-term investment in capital assets, but we're also talking about the operating budget. And so as we move forward to that, you can see that for every year, we look at revenue first and we determine what we are going to lose in enrollment because obviously, we're a declining enrollment district. Generally, we start out with a 500 student loss. And then this year, we actually end up at about 208 because we've seen an increase in our Tejas and Plato enrollment. And then we're always adding a grade to the YWLA cohorts. And so our net loss going into next year, what we projected to be, would be 208 students. Now, that drives our revenue projections, as I mentioned. And so we are conservatively estimating that we would lose the weighted average daily attendance revenue associated with 208 students. On this slide, you're just seeing a different depiction of the way that our budget is allocated. So previously, I showed you by function. Now I'm showing you by category of either payroll and benefits or contracted services. Payroll and benefits obviously demonstrates that we invest in our people with 84% of our annual operating budget going to our personnel and salaries, wages, and then also in our employee health benefits and those things. Contracted services is typically our utilities and other services we contract for. But utilities obviously comprises the largest element of contracted services. And then general supplies is all of the various supplies we use, but fuel tends to be the highest driver in this category. And then the others barely amount, don't even amount to quite 5%, and those are described there. With regard to our staffing ratios, over the last couple of years, we've been increasing the high school and middle school staffing ratio. Last year, we finally reached 24 to 1, and we've held that stable. So you won't see any staffing ratio increases in any of the grade levels. So high schools, middle schools remain at 24 to 1, while elementary schools are 20 and 1/2 to 1. And then this is just one last summary of the budget compared to last year. So you can see revenues and appropriations. You can see that in last year, we adopted a budget with a $1.2 million deficit. That's reflective of that additional 1/2% you asked us to approve over the 1.5% recommended salary increase. For 2020 to 2021, we built that 2% in, and we are again proposing a balanced budget with the understanding that we will have to resolve that through managing attrition. And if the state came back with any adjustments in the future, probably the first thing I would recommend that we would do to remedy any loss of revenue would be giving up the $500 one-time lump sum. That would be the first case. And then I think otherwise, we are solvent and we are stable enough that we can go forward next year with this 2% and with a $500 one-time lump sum, knowing that if there are any adjustments we had to make, that's the way we would start adjusting our budget backwards if we had to. I don't really foresee that. We talked briefly about it earlier today. But the state has said they're going to hold us harmless. If you saw the city's budget presentation today or any of their meeting, you may have seen that they talked a great deal about their revenue loss. But the city is very different from us in that a third of their budget at least comes from sales tax revenue. And as they are experiencing a loss of consumerism and people are bound in the homes, they're not experiencing the same sales that drive the sales tax revenue for the city. So they have different revenue streams that we don't experience. At the state level, they are still telling us we will be held harmless for not only the remainder of this year, but next year as well. And so with that being said, I believe that we can recommend a proposed budget with these increases, a balanced budget, and then we will be able to support it next year. So here is the remainder of the budget calendar. This is our budget workshop this evening on April 13th. We'll bring back the final budget for your approval on May 13th. And then, as always, we must bring back the tax roll and the tax rate for adoption in August after the final certified values are published. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions. Let me stop sharing my screen and make sure that I can see you. Ms. Monica, do I have... Oh, Ms. Monica is gone. No, there she is. Ms. Monica's here. Do I have any questions, Ms. Monica? You're muted, but I see no. All right, then. I will mute my microphone and my video.
Did Charlie have a question?
No.
No questions?
No questions.
No questions?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Ms. Leeper.
She's good. At this time, I'd like to invite Champagne to join us and make herself available in the event that any of the trustees have any questions relative to the last internal audit. Are you with her, Champagne? Monica, do you see her on...
She's with us. I'm waiting.
She's muted.
There she is.
There she is.
Thank you. I'm back. This is Champagne. Good evening. Well, President Ms. Ochoa, Superintendent, all the board members and all the cabinets. Hope you are doing well.
Thank you.
Do you all have any question for me on the last package and the monthly report and weekly reports?
Questions? I don't. Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Champagne. No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Champagne.
Thanks.
Okay, now we will discuss the agenda items listed in the posted notice of regular meeting of the Isleta ISD Board of Trustees for April 15, 2020, and related recommended motions with the superintendent and the executive cabinet, and receive responses to questions and/or requests for additional information through the superintendent in preparation for deliberation and action on April 15, 2020. Regular Board of Trustees meetings. Okay, we will now discuss the consent items. Consent item number one is the minutes of the Board of Trustees Workshop, March 9, 2020, 6:00 PM. Consent item number two, Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, March 11, 2020, 6:00 PM. Item number three, Board of Trustees Emergency Meeting, March 13, 2020, 4:30 PM. Okay. Consent item number four, Ratification of Award of YSD Contract Number 20200155 with Region 19. Okay, consent item number five, Low Attendance Day Waiver, the late start date on February 5, 2020. Consent item number six, Low Attendance Waiver, Parkland Elementary School, 31st, 2020. Consent item number seven, Approval of Award of YSD Contract Number 20200143 with the El Paso County Community College District.
Cruz?
Mr. Altero Ramirez, yes?
Yes, Cruz, it's kind of been my habit, anything with the Vass Community College because they're more aware to go ahead and abstain, even though there's no conflict of interest here. And so I would ask that we move that off the consent agenda so that I can probably vote on that almost.
Okay, I see no problem with that.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Any other questions or requests? Okay, thank you. Okay, now we will go on to the action items, okay? Remember, if you have, raise your hand or just open your mic and we'll start the discussion. Okay, action item number one.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes.
Oh, no, go ahead. I'm sorry. I interrupted you. Finish what you're saying. I do have a question on this one.
Oh, okay. Action item number one, inclusion of regularly assigned part-time employees in March 13, 2020, parameters for the pay during emergency closure. Ms. Woodruff?
Yeah, my question is just at the bottom, it lists the people who are not included in that. And that is the list of the people who won't be receiving this pay during the emergency closure. Do you see what I'm talking about? It's off-duty police officers working in security, PT, Texas Ed, homeless, CH, and youth caseworker, visiting artist theater, visiting artist, game manager, varsity football, varsity assistant football, game manager, game cashier, ticket seller, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know if I need to read them all or not, but these are the ones that will not be receiving, but everybody else will. That's my question.
Lindley, if you're available.
Oh, I can't hear Bobby speaking, I think, but I couldn't hear her.
Bobby is here, and she was trying to unmute. But yes, ma'am, there she is. Bobby, we still can't hear you. So, Ms. Woodruff, you are correct. That list below are the list of employees who would not be included in the payment that's going forward, correct, Bobby? Well, she started. There she is. There you go.
There she goes. Okay, all right. But everybody else will be included in getting the pay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, okay. Thank you. That's my question.
Any other questions on this item? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. Okay, action item number two, inclusion of certain substitutes for regular duty employees in March 13, 2020, parameters for pay during emergency closure. Any questions on this? Bobby, can you elaborate a little bit on what this really means?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. It's Mr. Ochoa, Board of Trustees, Dr. De La Torre. What this is meaning are either those employees that are on a temporary part-time basis. And those include, like, El Paso Police Department officers who are currently not providing services because they're not reporting to campuses. For example, they're still paid by the El Paso Police Department and are able to accept part-time work with other institutes. Also, it includes co-op places that aren't performing yet. It's only temporary part-time.
Losing you.
What about now?
What about now?
Bobby? Are you close? Your phone?
I'm right by my phone, sir. Right by the computer.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. So basically, it's any temporary part-time employee.
Okay. Action item number three, Delegation of Authority to Superintendent to Modify Emergency Closure and Related Parameters for Employee Pay. Can you discuss this one? I have a question. Does anybody have a question on this? I just want clarification. Should she leave? Bobby?
Go ahead and ask it.
Yes, sir.
Item number three, action item.
Yes, sir.
Delegation of Authority to Superintendent to Modify Emergency Closure and Related Parameters for Employee Pay. Please elaborate on that.
Yes, of course, sir. I'd be happy to. What this is saying is that we're delegating the authority to Dr. De La Torre to return those employees that are considered essential employees and receiving time and a half during the closure to revert back to regular time in the event they, the state releases the stay-at-home work order. And it would end at the time in which we did return back to work, sir.
Thank you.
My pleasure, sir.
Ah, okay. Yes. Who's, uh?
I'm sorry, it's Mr. Ramirez asking.
Oh, okay.
I apologize.
Mr. Ramirez.
Yes, sir. This, along with some of the other issues that are that are being discussed or that you're going to go through, I I just wanted to make a comment and based on the fact that I I saw what the mayor, you know, did today and as far as the new date, May 17, I and I I just, I would just like to go on record just stating that I would like to see Dr. De La Torre get all the powers that he to effectively manage the district so that we can move quickly on things. And and if we need to sign a contract, you know, if if, you know, we can turn things around immediately, graduations and stuff like that. I want all those things to happen. I don't think we need to have a meeting for it. So I with that being said, whatever we need to do to support him, I would like for us as a board to do that and do that as strongly as we could. But I would also ask Dr. De La Torre is is that when this is all over, and and the good Lord willing, have him soon, but when this is all over, that you come back and you talk to us a little bit more about this. So things like authorities suspend certain monies up to a certain level and that sort of thing, we need to come back and talk about that. So I just I just wanted to state that.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
By the way, you do have my, you do have my vote and confidence on this, okay?
On the what?
You have my vote and confidence in 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 the things you have to do, sir.
Yeah, right now, it's just a matter of who decides to make the first, the first move to go ahead and accept that it is highly unlikely that we will come back this year. And that additional time will give myself, you, and our staff an opportunity to consider commencement exercises, summer school, and what school will look like in the fall, because I think it will look very different in the fall. And and I think our teachers need the time. Certainly, our instructional leaders, principals, and others need the time to really look at our public school system through a different lens, because this has been sobering, to say the least.
Yeah. I just want to say, I'm sorry, President Ochoa.
Identify, identify yourself, Ms. Lucetta.
Oh, trustee Lucetta. I just want to say that I'm I'm right on board with trustee Ramirez with, and also with what our our junior president requested or or, you know, stated in her in her statement as far as if if we if we are the district that needs to go out ahead and and let the community know, let our parents know, our employees know. I think it's important because we, they need to know ahead of time. And I think we've been, we've been, we've been a model as to how we've been keeping in touch with our employees. You've done an excellent job on that, as well as as our staff. And I think that it's important to to do that if as soon as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Lucetta. Any other comments, questions? Well, I think we all fully support all these emergency measures. I just wanted them to be explained to the public as to what we are approving. Basically, because a lot of times they can't get this, these, these items in their hands. So I just wanted to make sure that we were above board and transparent on everything we do as a board, which we are. And I think we we're all in support of that.
I I think it would be helpful, President Ochoa, if Ms. Leeper would explain, there are two, maybe even three agenda items where the district is releasing surplus materials. And in one case, I believe that they have asked whether or not they, being medical centers and hospitals, have asked whether or not they can borrow some of our equipment and tables to help the hospital get through this. So if we can go through that, I think it's important for the community to know that we believe we're the, we're the hub of our community. And if hospitals, Del Sol, Providence, it doesn't matter who, come to us and they want equipment and beds and things like that, that we're going to release all of that with your support, of course, to try and help them through this very difficult time.
Thank you, Dr. De La Torre. All right, let's go move on to action item number four, Temporary Modifications of Policy EIC Local Regarding Weighted Points for Advanced Payments Placement Courses. Questions, comments?
Richard?
No, I actually don't have any comments on the advanced placement. I'm actually really grateful that that you all have done an amazing job in making sure that students who have taken these classes are not, I guess, hurt by the fact that they might not have the best opportunity learning environment at home. And so I was really, really grateful that you all actually took into consideration some of my ideas. And I hope that it's in the best interest of all students because it's the most important thing. And I think that one thing I've learned more than anything since I've been on the board is our district is all about equity. And so I think this is the most fair and equitable decision for all of our students. So nobody's hampered by whatever situation they might have at home right now.
Thank you. And I I just want to go on further. It is such a blessing, I'll just say, to have someone who works in that field. It's like having another person on cabinet who has a different perspective and looks at things through his own lens. And he really helped to shape this. And it's as good and it's as solid and it's as strong as anybody else's policy around this. And I I think it's actually been the model for some TUC districts. And when I talk about TUC districts, I'm talking about Dallas, Fort Worth, Houston, San Antonio, we're talking about big school districts, Austin. And I think what we've come up with is is a very solid policy, given the current circumstances.
Thank you. I concur. It's it's good to have Richard on there to give us his perspective on a lot of these items.
Want to make sure he's earning his money over there at the P.
Oh, I'm sure.
They pay me for a reason, right?
Hey. Item number five, Temporary Modifications to Policy EIC Regarding Local Graduation Honors for 2020 Graduating Seniors. Nothing to say about this, Richard?
Oh, no, no, just pretty much the same thing. Part of it was kind of my, the idea of of making sure that our number one, number two in our class don't get hurt by their home environment. We know that when we're talking about number one, number two, number three, or four in a class, they're sometimes separated by tenths of a point, hundreds of a point. And so we don't know what their home life is. And the example that I gave was Mr. Ramirez's last year's valedictorian, number two, who came from Mexico, went through everything, worked so hard. And you don't know what his home life would be right now if he was still in school. In high school, and we would never want somebody to lose what they've worked four years for because of this awful pandemic and the situation that they're placed in right now. So I'm incredibly grateful to the cabinet, to Dr. De La Torre, for, once again, listening to me. I it was just a suggestion, but I really, really, really do appreciate that they always listen to all the ideas that all of us have.
Thank you. Very good. Action item number six, this is one that Dr. De La Torre was talking about a while ago. Authority to Dispose of Items Made Surplus as a Result of COVID-19.
Mr. Ochoa? This is Connie Woodrow.
Yes, Connie.
Yeah, so I did have a question about that one. And so you're talking about, in that case, it's mostly tables and stuff like that? Or is that for the the next one that has the lending? Number seven, the loan of essential supplies? Because I I was just curious, it's not that I don't want, but what things we would be disposing of?
The first has a lot to do with perishable items that we have in our warehouses, in the store rooms, that we can't use because of the type of food that we are preparing for students under the circumstances.
Okay.
The second one is, the health community has asked whether or not, if necessary, they could borrow some of our HPA or the Bel Air High School's equipment, if necessary. We can't do it without your approval. So the first is primarily food and some other perishable or items that have expiration dates that we're not going to be able to use. So we may as well share with food banks and other organizations in town. The second one has to do with, should things ever get really bad, we need to know that we can come and take the equipment at Bel Air or any Health Professionals Academy in the in the area if needed. And of course, our answer is yes. If things ever get that bad, take whatever you need.
That's that's such a a great position, I think, for us to take. And I'm very glad we're doing that. I just wanted really to kind of hear, hear what, you know, hear what we were going to be lending them. So thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Woodrow. Okay, item number seven, which we just discussed, about the authorization, essential supplies or equipment for use in responding to the COVID-19 emergency. Action item number eight, Impact of the COVID-19 Emergency Closure on calculation of Secondary Grade Point Average. Okay, item number nine, action item.
I just had a quick question on this one, I'm sorry.
Which one?
Uh, number eight, sorry.
Okay.
Just, I know I think I had sent you an email, Dr. De La Torre, I believe it was probably like this weekend. On the dual credit classes, how will those be, that grade point be affected? Because are they, are they going to have a different high school grade than the than the college grades?
Uh, in reference to, are they going to have a weighted grade? Rosemary, are you with it?
Yes, sir, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, the dual credit courses, as you know, they get a high school credit assigned and then a dual credit community college grade. And whatever they get for the dual credit piece is going to go into the boundary system there. And then the high school grades will follow the grading rubric.
Okay, so NT is okay with us having a a different grade? It might possible a different grade? Because I know the grade scale that was sent to us, they will get 100 for the fourth nine weeks, which could bump up their grade significantly from what it might be on the college one? And TA is okay with us doing it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, awesome. That's all I was asking.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Panchaka.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kudere. Okay, item number nine, action item, Temporary Procedure for Formative Evaluation of Internal Audit. I think that this is the audit, Ms., where are you, Ms. Monica?
I'm right here, sir.
Okay. Can you explain why we need to complete this, please?
Yes, we need for the needs to, I have received a couple of informative evaluations back that we sent to you. So in order for this to be completed, we need all of you to send us your, the evaluation forms for Ms. Champagne. It's the formative. And then we give that over to President Ochoa, who will then compile his, his complete report to provide it to Ms. Champagne.
What's the date for that?
It's actually going to be on Wednesday, April 15 is the deadline. It was supposed to be for the 15th.
Okay. Are we going to make it?
You can either turn in your taxes or you can get this in.
Okay. Item number 10, Determination of Emergency Under Texas Education Code 44 dot zero two C, Allowing Increased Delegation of Contract to the Superintendent. I think the only question that, like, I think Mr. Ramirez brought us right it up is when do we determine that the emergency is over? By a state authority, local authority, or?
I think what Ms. Leeper and I have determined is that when Governor Abbott and/or, and I assume it will be in concert, they're not going to do anything that would contradict one another. When they determine that the order is lifted, for all intents and purposes, they've given the locus of authority back to our school district. And then it becomes a question of what day is it? Does it make sense to come back? So for example, if if they do that in late May, then we have to determine whether or not there's any point in asking parents and students to come back to school for two weeks, knowing that everybody out there, or most people out there, I think are going to have some trepidation in just returning kids back to school. And there are going to be teachers and other employees that are not going to feel completely comfortable coming back. And so what my team and I are going to look at over the course of this week is whether or not, since we know now that the order has been extended through, I believe, May 17, whether or not coming back for three weeks to school makes any sense or whether it makes more sense to go ahead and start preparing for a summer school program and, more importantly, for the fall, and then start focusing on whether or not we can try and do something special for the seniors this year and try and have some kind of a commencement exercise, whether, I highly, I'm not very optimistic that we can do it in June. I'm a little more optimistic that we may be able to do something in late July, early August. But what I am convinced of is that we need to do something for the class of 2020, if we can. And I think that should we decide to call the 2019-20 school year good, then the time that we have available to us at the schools and at the central office should be expended on closing this school year with precision relative to transcripts, class rank, GPAs, getting in their diplomas, you know, getting teachers, releasing some of that burden from the teachers, and starting to prepare for whether or not we could possibly entertain some kind of a summer program, although that's that's a little bit out there. But more importantly, let's get all of the high school principals to start planning on what the commencement exercise might look like at their stadium without any commitment to a date or time. But what would it look like? So that if the governor and the mayor decide that it's okay to do it, we can move, I think, quickly, pivot, do something like that. And then prepare ourselves for the fall, which I said before, and I think it's true, we'll feel a little different than what we're accustomed to.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. De La Torre.
Absolutely.
Okay, and if there's no further discussion, let's move on to action number 11, Determination of Procurement Delay Due to Major Operational Failure Under Texas. determination of procurement delay due to major operational failure under Texas Education Code 44 dot zero three one H. Item number 12, award of Phase One Solicitation Bond 2019 RFP dash zero one BP 1904 Bel Air High School additions and renovations.
Just had a quick question on this, not just, not really relating to Bel Air in any way, but are we still good on being able to work on construction and taking advantage of the fact that our schools are not running? I know that there's been discussions statewide as if school construction is actually an essential. Are we still good as far as all of our construction projects?
There has been that debate. I think the federal law trumps the state law. And the federal government has reaffirmed that school construction is essential. And so to some extent, there, there isn't a lot of silver lining in what we've experienced so far. In our case, the, the little silver lining will be that Hellis has moved up their timelines and is accelerating their project. BTC is ready to move portables out at Bel Air High School. The Hank's Middle School project is going accordingly. And I think as part of this board agenda, we need your support to get started on making sure that the students that are going to Lancaster Elementary School arrive and have refrigerated air because the students from Alicia Chacon are going to be arriving at La Barren Park and have refrigerated air. And there are a number of other projects that we get a chance to push on BLK to move up because construction, school, school construction is considered an essential function.
Ms. Lucetta?
Yes, so I have a, it kind of related with this item and I did an item 10. So does that mean that for these contracts in upcoming, in the upcoming months while we're going through this pandemic, you'll be able to approve these type of contracts?
That's what Lindley and Susan have stated, that as long as we're in a state of an emergency and we get the, the opportunity to accelerate some of these, save the district money without coming back and having a board meeting, that it may be in our best interest to give me that latitude during this period of time. I'll tell you that, given our relationship as a governing board, I never do anything without sharing it directly with you either as individuals. So there isn't anything that I would ever enter into that you wouldn't be aware of on an individual basis. I'm just not comfortable doing business like that. I don't, I may not need your permission, but I will always want your support before I do something like that. So what we're asking is that, at least during the emergency period, that if something comes up, a water line break or anything like that, that I can get, that I can address that or help Lindley address that without having to call a special board meeting or another board meeting. And that's the extent of it. We don't do anything in this school district that we don't make our trustees aware of.
Thank you, Ms. Lucetta. I do have, you mentioned Hellis. Are they the ones that are upgrading our baseball fields?
They're, they're about to install the artificial surface on all the baseball fields and softball fields about 35 days ahead of schedule.
Okay, great.
I believe Lindley and Susan are finalizing that contract this week.
Thank you. Okay, we come down to action item 19, lucky 13. Award of Phase One Solicitation Bond 2019 RFP dash zero four BP 1908A Lancaster Elementary HVAC and Life Cycle Upgrades. Questions, comments? I just have, I just want to reaffirm that this is so we can get the school ready for the fall. Ready for the transition.
Yes, sir. I see Dr. De La Torre is distracted. But yes, sir, that is what this is for. It's to convert the swamp coolers to refrigerated air at Lancaster in time for the August school start.
There's no further questions or further discussion? Anybody wants to say anything? No? Hey, everybody looks pretty tired. I know. This being at home is really different. There's a motion to adjourn.
Thank you all. You guys were amazing. If you need anything, please reach out, give us a phone call. We may be super busy out on the road, having lunch somewhere or something like that. Just kidding. I'm right here.
You made the motion, right?
I said so, so moved.
Okay. All right. Hey, guys, take care. We'll see you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Stay safe and healthy. Richard, take care of that little guy.
I'll try to.